I just unmuted it.
Good evening, Councilman Myrtle, Councilor Valentino.
Hello, everyone.
Do you have any questions for community feedback? Did anybody get a hold of it? Okay, thank you. So. Like, was it attendance from the public? Yeah, it says. Are you comfortable giving your remarks? Not Iran and Syria. Sure. Hold this regular council meeting to order for January 31st, 2022, 7:00 p.m. I'd like to say, in the room, we have Councillor Fountain, Councillor Prue, Councillor Wong, Councillor Ellsworth, Deputy Mayor Landmark, Mayor Shook. On Zoom, we have Councillor Ricardo and Councillor Valentino.
Yes, they also received the phone call from Councillor Corbin looking for tonight's meeting.
Okay, so we have regrets from Councillor Corbin. Thank you. With that, I'd like to acknowledge that we're a treaty-bound, which is wasted pretty nation that and home members may be, and I'd like to say also that we are all treaty people. I'd like an approval of the agenda. Councillor Valentino, Deputy Mayor of Member, all in favor?
Aye.
You did? Yeah, we did. Actually, nice to see both screening. I must acknowledge that this screen that I can now see people on Zoom has, is that very nice, so thank you very much. Okay, I have been told there is no retro for community comments and feedback, so we will carry on to adoption of the minutes. By point one, it's a special regular meeting of council, January 27th, 2022. Resolution 2022-013, moved by Deputy Mayor Landmark, seconded by Councillor Prue. Be resolved that the minutes of the special meeting of council held in council chambers, City Hall, Thompson Manor, on Thursday, January 27th, 2022, be adopted as circulated. Administration?
No, nothing further.
Any concerns or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Point two, regular meeting of council, January 17th, 2022. Resolution 2022-014, moved by Councillor Prue, seconded by Councillor Landmark. Be resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held in council chambers, City Hall, Thompson Manor, on Monday, January 17th, 2022, be adopted as circulated. Administration?
Nothing further.
Council? Open the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go into resolution. 6.1. Is I need a motion to lift from the table, resolution 2022-006, for the tabulation prices for the purpose of the hydroback. Do I have a motion to lift from the table? Councillor Prue, Deputy Mayor of Landmark, all those in favor?
Aye.
The next will be. Resolution 6.2. The resolution to approve the tabulation prices for the hydroback. Resolution 2022-006, moved by Councillor Wong, seconded by Councillor Fountain. Be it resolved that council approved the recommendation that the purchasing agent award the purchase of hydroback to Joe Johnson Equipment for their tender price of $513,500 plus applicable taxes as per tenant file number 13121. Also, be it further resolved that the purchase of the hydroback is funded from the utility reserve. Administration?
Yes, as presented the last time, this was before council. This is a unit that's used heavily by the utility for a lot of the digs around town, as well as digs that are around fiber optic lines and hydro type lines. The previous Young Hydroback had an incident that was written off, and the administration tendered this based on the need to replace it for placement unit. There was one bid received from Joe Johnson Equipment, as noted in the memo, and there's an approval from the purchasing agent describing what the pricing was and the discounts that were proposed through this, this offer through the tender. Council asked a number of questions when they tabled this last week, and the administration quickly responded and sent them up to council for review prior to the meeting.
Thank you. For the Councillor Wong.
Thank you, Madam Ega. I have a question for the city manager. We request for the tabling, which is two weeks ago. Why are we getting the information this morning?
The information was because that's when we got it out to you. I have no reason that it was any later earlier. The information was provided prior to the meeting.
Okay, so my concern is, we have two weeks to do research. Now you gave us the information this morning, eight o'clock. And my question to all my colleagues, how many of you spent time to do the research before we come today, right now, to make that half a million dollar decision? How many of you that spend time to do the research and do the agenda based on the information we received this morning? Have anybody spent the whole entire morning and the afternoon before seven o'clock, or you guys spent zero time to do the research for that?
I read the information at the time.
You did?
Councillor Ellsworth.
I certainly thank you, Councillor Wong. I certainly. Time to do research because I, first of all, I don't know much about hydro trucks or hydroback trucks or any other equipment. So as a councillor, that's got to make a decision on a million dollar piece of equipment. I think it's crucial that we at least try to understand what we're doing. The only, on the other information I had prior to this morning was based on what administration had forward that we need a truck, basically what the city manager said. The MBI claim that much was the truck and much was the rental, that's basically what we do with the truck. But there's the size, what, what we were buying, we knew very little other than from the person that bid on it. We knew that. So this morning I would type in hydroback trucks to get some idea on used and new trucks. I'll tell you what, submitting your name and everything else is tough to get there because it's such a big piece of equipment, I don't know why. But I have to trust and event the trust administration for the last three years, two months, based on what they know, because I don't know, but I think it's a very delicate question about doing our own research. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The reason I'm asking that question, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, I'm just saying, the time is really limited for us to do anything we want to do. Two weeks ago, we probably have a week and a half to do the research, but it's kind of time sensitive for us and also limited time for us to do a study, if you want to do a study. So now, I come to the, the real question, is problematic to me because we did buy this equipment new back in the day, but because of it destroyed, destroyed by the, the city worker, so now, we've got $173,000 debt from the MBI. To me, you owe.
Actually, nice to see both screen and I must acknowledge that this screen that I can now see people on Zoom has is that very nice. So, thank you very much. Okay, I have been told there is no retro for community comments and feedback, so we will carry on to adoption of the minutes. Five point one is a special regular meeting of council, January twenty seventh, twenty twenty two. Resolution two zero two two zero one three moved by Deputy Mayor Landmark, second by Council Pro. Be resolved that the minutes of the special meeting of council held in council chambers, city hall, Thompson Manor. On Thursday, January twenty seventh, twenty twenty two, be adopted as circulated. Administration?
None of them through.
Any conference concerns on? Over the question, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I point to regular meeting of council, January seventeenth, twenty twenty two. Resolution two zero two two zero one four moved by Council Pro, second by. For landmark. Be resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held in council chambers, city hall, Thompson Manor. On Monday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty two, be adopted as circulated. Administration?
Nothing for.
Council? Over the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into resolution. Six point one. Is I need a motion to. Lift from the table, resolution two zero two two zero zero six for the tabulation prices for the purpose of the hydroback. Do I have a motion to lift from the table? Council Pro, Deputy Mayor Landmark, all those in favor?
Aye.
Very. The next will be. Resolution six point two. The resolution to approve the tabulation prices for. Resolution two zero two two zero zero six moved by Council Wong, seconded by Council Fountain. Be it resolved that council approved the recommendation that the purchasing agent. And award the purchase of hydroback to Joe Johnson Equipment for their tender price five hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Plus applicable taxes as per tenant foul number one, three, one, two, one. Also be a further result that the purchase of the hydroback is funded from the utility reserve. Administration?
Yes, as presented the last time, this was before council on. This is a unit that's used heavily by the utility for a lot of the digs around town as well as digs that are around. Fiber optic lines and hydro type lines. The previous young hydroback had an incident that was written off. And the administration tendered this based on the need to replace it for placement unit. There was one bid received from Joe Johnson Equipment is noted in the memo, and there's an approval from the purchasing agent. Describing what the pricing was and the discounts that were proposed through this this offer through the tender. Council asked a number of questions when they tabled this last week, and the administration put responses and sent them up to council for review prior to the meeting.
Thank you. Would the Council Wong?
Thank you, Madam Ega. I have a question for the city manager. We request for the tabling, which is two weeks ago. Why are we getting the information this morning?
The information was because that's when we got it out to you. I have no reason that it was any later earlier. The information was provided prior to the meeting.
Okay, so my concern is we have two weeks to do research. Now you gave us the information this morning eight o'clock. And my question to all my colleagues, how many of you spent time to do the research before we come today right now? To make that half a million dollar decision? How many of you that spend time to do the research and due diligence based on the information we received this morning? Have anybody spent the whole entire morning and the afternoon before seven o'clock? Or you guys spent zero time to do the research for that?
I read the information at the time.
You did?
Good.
I certainly thank you, Council Wong. Time to do research because I, first of all, I don't know much about hydro trucks or hydro back trucks or any other. So as a counselor, that's got to make a decision on a million dollar piece of equipment. I think it's crucial that we at least try to understand what we're doing. The only other information I had prior to this morning was based on what administration had forward that we need a truck. Basically, what the city manager said, the M P I claim that much was the truck and much was the rental. That's basically what we do with the truck. But there's the size, what we were buying, we knew very little other than from the person that bid on it. We knew that. So this morning I would type in hydro back trucks to get some idea on used and new trucks. I'll tell you what, submitting your name and everything else is tough to get there because it's such a big piece of equipment. I don't know why. But I asked the trust and event the trust administration for the last three years, two months, based on what they know. Because I don't know, but I think it's a very delicate question about doing our own research. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The reason I'm asking that question, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus. I'm just saying the time is really limited for us to do anything we want to do. Two weeks ago, we probably have a week and a half to do the research. But it's kind of time sensitive for us and also limited time for us to do a study if you want to do a study. So now I come to the real question is problematic to me because we did buy this equipment new back in the day. But because of it destroyed, destroyed by the city worker. So now we've got hundred seventy three thousand dollars debt from the M P I. To me, the only way we can justify to buy this piece of equipment got to be based on what we getting back from M P I. Which is the budget should be hundred seventy three thousand dollars with the amount that we can afford to spend. To purchase the equivalent amount of the equipment, not to top out. The message is very bad to me to the public. So basically, we can destroy any equipment, even if we bought brand new. Later on, we just go buy a brand new again. So how many times you can do that? Because of this carelessly handling the machine to me, that's why it costs us extra money today. We already bought new two thousand thirteen. So now today we have to buy another one new because of whatever reason. And again, when I look at all this, you face on the information I get it today. When you look at the hours, look at the mileage, when you do the math from July to today as today. Average about six kilometers a day that we use and less than two hours a day that we use based on the mileage and the hour. So to me, it's not justified to buy a brand new. It's not a lot of usage as this mission is insane. It's a very important piece on the machine, perhaps it's true. But the usage is not after what I expect so far important and very busy machine. Two hours, the mathematic is the best thing ever in better either in the human time. Use the number, we never lie. When you do the math, that's all you come to. Two hours a day, one point six hours if you do it particularly based on the four hundred and some hours today versus to when you body brand. When you're going to deliver it to us, it's hundred hours away. So you do all the math, less than two hours a day you use, less than six kilometers a day you drive. And also, how about the burner? The burner is only sixteen point seven hour. I understand the burner is only keeping the water prevent freezing. So through the last three months, we have extreme cold weather. So to keep the water running above the temperature is only sixteen hours. That means we very minimum using the equipment to draw the line or stop digging sixteen hours. That's all we use. Understand you don't need to use it all the time to keep the water above zero for only sixteen hours for the last three months. Is very bare minimum, bare minimum. So again, the only way I can support to buy another wrecking truck is kind of based on what M P I pay us. Hundred seventy three thousand dollars, not another brand new. So we keep on digging money out of the reserve or taxpayer to top up some mistake made by us. That's not fair. Don't get me wrong, I would send a message very clear. I'm not disagree to have a piece of equipment. I disagree how we spend the money and how we do with this problem. So that's why I will ask for a reportable and I will not support to buy a brand new. I will support to use the hundred seventy three thousand dollars to find a piece of equipment equivalent to that amount. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. I would say the first to start off, the sooner that we get information is obviously the the better when it comes to kind of running, running down or comparing. You notes kind of thing, but in this case, there was kind of three specific questions that were pretty self explanatory. And as Counselor Ellsworth alluded to, for for just anybody to go and get pricing on this kind of equipment is certainly not an easy thing to do. So that's why we we rely on our administration for that. Counselor Wong does make another good point. It is unfortunate that we lost that piece of equipment to an accident, but. It was an accident, and I think that the management of personnel involved is something that is best is is left to our administration and the relevant directors. And just a final point, buying a used machine, because I have spoke to a number of people who are are familiar with the equipment. And none of them really said that that their maintenance light anyways, that there's a fair bit that goes into operating these so. And with that coupled with not knowing the nature of the work that the that the back truck was used for, forgetting something that's ten years old. I think there's a there's a lot of uncertainty that comes with that as well. Just a couple of the points I wanted to make. Thanks for administration for answering the questions that we had tabled the resolution for last week, and I'll be supporting tonight.
Thank you, Council Valentino.
Thank you, Mayor Smoak. I'll be supporting the resolution tonight. I think that as counselors, we didn't just have information this morning. We saw this now two weeks prior to tonight. So there was apple time if you wanted to get more information on your own. I do appreciate the answers to the three specific questions this morning. Do you also take merit in the fact that we do have a red seal mechanic, Council Pro, and his response today also? So I'll be supporting this as is as we. The other point is for me, we only had one person tender it. So to continue to lease when we didn't even have a competitive tender makes no sense for the taxpayers. So I'll be supporting this to get this purchased. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah. I reviewed the information provided by the first department a couple of weeks ago and it broke down. The equipment was what we use it for. And the fact is, a piece of equipment like this. Maybe it's not having to be used every day, but when it is required, we need it immediately. So it's not like we can get something out from Winnipeg or wherever nearest equipment is. Doing breaks, water breaks in. In my own career, I know how important this is and how important the trenches. The weight of water. Or waste. As well. It's a vital piece of equipment. What I know that is needed and. I don't know who will be going after somebody else's, so always. I think this company is dealing with this kind of straightforward with allowing some of our rental rates to be included in the price breakdown. Small discount, mind you, but you know. And I see the logic of how they've done it. My family had a construction company and I know that we did similar things with our heavy equipment where they had the rent out and then we sold. Some of the rentals was put towards the purchase price. So I see the homework that's been done and unfortunately you didn't get all of the information right away, but satisfied with it and I'll be supportive. Yeah, I'll be supportive of this also. Digging around, I talked to a few contractors in town and a lot of them said even for three hundred thousand to find a good used one is is pretty tough. And they are extremely high maintenance. I also talked with Manitoba Hydro and they said there's very high maintenance also, so and the importance of it. Same data couldn't find any concrete prices online, but going from what the contractor said. And what what this piece of equipment has for a motor, I think it's really good and I'm in paper.
Just to remind everybody that we are also to comment for Council on the motions tonight. As we have been doing for the last couple of weeks now, Council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While I appreciate the information that I received from administration, the last one was at four twenty seven today. I will tell you the information we received at four twenty seven today was not information we had previously, was not there. When I was trying to do my research today on back to micro back trucks, I didn't know what what information to put into it. And to Council Wong's point, in fact, if you look at it, it was for a new or used model no later than twenty twenty one, which means that we weren't looking any older than that. While I agree, without a doubt that we should have this viable piece of equipment. Based on the information we see, we can see that it's not been used as much as I would have expected as well. And I believe that there is good equipment out there. Because the shooters, people like us that buys brand new stuff and sell that is probably almost good if you look hard enough, almost as good as was was still new. I have a difficult time spending five hundred and something thousand dollars. But we're going to go into budget pretty soon and all we hear is the negative because the negative is true, it's facts about the high cost of policing and everything else and the safety of this community. And we're willing to throw away three hundred plus thousand dollars over and above the M P I claim is a lot of money. So for a record, absolutely, we need to have a back truck. No, no question about it. I think that's an important piece of equipment of our fleet. I guess the question is, did we really need to spend five hundred and something thousand on a brand on a piece of equipment that is not new? It's six months old. I bought a number of vehicles in my lifetime and the minute you drive it off the lot, you lose quite a value. And then you start to use, you lose more. Other than the thirty something thousand dollars that they took off for rental, you're still paying well over five hundred thousand for a used hydro back. Which I would argue if the time was to prevent itself, we could find a really good used piece of equipment for a lot less than what we're paying tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I will not support spending that money.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I, the door has been opened by two people, so I'm going to walk right through it and try and to toe the line because my question is going to be on the line. Normally, in any company or organization, when you have an incident results in an accident or something of that regard that costs money. You'll have an investigation to ensure that that or to ensure it doesn't happen or reduce the occurrence of it happening now. I understand that we can't bring human resource conversations to this venue. But I'm asking the administration to let myself and the public know whether or not an investigation was concluded in this regard. And that could be just the yes or a no.
Yes.
Is it concluded?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. After I listened to all my colleague comments. It's trouble again. So in the world, there's a lot of used machine. You talk about billions and billions of used machine, heavy duty machine in the world. If everybody had that mindset to say use one trouble this and that, where does use market go? Who would buy those use? How can they afford to do that? So definitely there is some good use equipment out there. You just, you have to have the knowledge to do that. If you don't have the knowledge, of course, it's not going to be happen, right? Madam Mayor, so that to me is trouble, you know, when you say there's a the used one is not a good one. I totally disagree with that. And now I come back to this resolution, you're approving no. When I read this. So to lease this piece of equipment, the lease agreement is five hundred and seven five thousand dollars. So. We already knew this is a one piece of equipment that the city need to own. After we got, after the city got into this accident, destroyed this machine. And I had trouble with the administration dealing with money. Why can't they go straight ahead to say, listen, we want to buy this machine? We have enough reserve fund in the water store to buy the piece of machine at that time. Regardless the M P I claim. Somehow I think that's how we should make move our money, buy that piece of equipment. So eliminate the sixty thousand dollars spent for the last seventy month. Maybe we get a good view for that, okay? So now, when I read this memo, they say the price is five hundred thirteen thousand because of giving thirty thousand dollars discount. But when I asked the question, they said the brand new machine is five seventy five. It's different than what? The paper showing me, are we buying the machine for five forty five or five seventy five? So if you go right for five seventy five, they're not giving us only thirty thousand, they're giving us sixty thousand discount now. So the mess, the information is doesn't line up in my opinion when I look at this. So again, I would go back to decision making when it comes to spend money. We know this is a piece of equipment we need to own it. Why didn't we go into the agreement to buy it at that time? And instead of leasing for six months, spend the sixty thousand. Now we come back, we pay a consider the the memo here, we pay a brand new price for the used equipment. It really doesn't make sense to me at all, which is we can do better. Right? So we could have got get into the agreement way before all this happened six months ago to purchase this. So now we receive the money from M P I, we can easily put that money back to the reserve. But we don't do that. We let it slide and slide and cost money. At the end, it's time sensitive and we just do it without due diligence. So. That's it. I think I'm done with this topic. Thank you.
Thank you. I know I was in on conversations and debates where we as council decided to go this this route not knowing what M P I was doing. So it was council that gave direction to administration as to how to do this. So just for that information and for buying used, I'm not saying it's not right. But it definitely takes people on site to check things out. We are that much farther away from any areas that would have the used equipment. And this one did have eight years on it, so I'm not sure what lifespan of that is. But they do take that into consideration basically when you are purchasing a nap. So Deputy Mayor Landmark.
It's the exception that nobody's done due diligence and our staff has done due diligence. The thing here for me is the, after the accident, I knew that we would, we needed to, we talked about that. And I don't know if that was in the council meeting or not, but we needed a piece of the hydro back. So that's why we leased it right away so we can, because we can lease right off the lot. So we can't buy something right off the lot. We have to tend it. And I don't know how good our purchasing engine is, but I don't think you put together a tender to send it out that day. And even if it isn't, then it takes a certain long time before it goes out and comes back in. So we're here now. We have, we did lease it and. So we go ahead, finish this off and purchase this piece of equipment at least four days.
You have spoke twice, Mr. Earl.
There's a request here, Madam Mayor, wasn't it? It goes beyond the the resolution. It's for the future. I'm going to make a request that when counselors ask for information on any given resolution or copy that we. We provide the information at least within two business days unless they have to go outside with a third party to get it. Because it's certainly right or wrong. I believe in democracy, this will pass and I hope so, that's welcome to them, that's their right. But for us to do our homework going forward in the future, we can't be getting stopped. And I don't blame our city manager, he's the only player we got. So I don't know why he's just receiving it, I'll leave it at that. But my request is unless there's a outside third party we need to get from two business days, we should have a response.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Say no more, or could you have your habits or something?
I did, thank you, Madam Mayor. You got to use those two shots when you can get them, I guess, but. I just wanted to mention that I will be supporting this and it's not that we don't need a back truck and it's not that I feel that used was the best way to go. I want the public to be aware that as we enter, as other people have mentioned here, as we enter into a pretty difficult budget season. I'm expecting things to get a lot more difficult than they were last year. Last year, I made it quite public that our administration was quite concerned about where we are financially. And this year, it appears as though things are even more challenged. We purchased a significant amount of equipment and I'm not saying we don't need this, but we purchased a lot of equipment this year. And I want taxpayers to be cognizant and aware of folks like this. I'm not saying we don't need this equipment. I'm very worried about where we're going to be in terms of taxes. And it's when we have these little votes like this that people should be aware and cognizant of what's happening in the background here. It seems like these things seem like small things, but they add up into big things. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council Valentino.
Thank you, Mayor Smoak. Just by comment on going into budget, we're still spending this money. We're still going to be spending about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to lease it. So there's still money being spent, so the public needs to be aware. So there's still money being spent, so the public needs to be aware of. If we don't purchase this tonight, it doesn't mean that we're not leasing or spending money for this piece of equipment, we're just gonna be leasing it. So I just wanted clarifying that point and I'll be supporting this as is. Thank you.
Unprivileged, Madam Mayor, just to clarify, my concern is about the amount of equipment, that this is a specific one. With the amount of equipment we purchased in the last year and a half specifically. Thank you.
Uh, point, Lord, Councilor. Okay, call for the question. All those in favor?
Alright.
Hi.
Opposed? Harry. Oh, I didn't hear that. I called that. Okay, and a recorded vote, I'm sorry I missed that. Have a recorded vote, all in favor, Counselor Pro, Counselor Valentino, Counselor McMurdo. Counselor or Deputy Mayor Lumber, Mayor Smook, opposed. Counselor Wong, Counselor Fountain, Counselor Ellsworth. Thank you. Six point three is the resignation to prove the sole source. With central square, center square. For the purchase of the asset management software. Resolution two zero two two zero one five. Moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lumber. Be resolved that Counselor Pro sole sourcing the center school center square for the. Purchase for asset management software at a cost of seventy eight thousand eight hundred and twenty five dollars. For phase one and thirty four thousand two hundred for phase two for a total cost of a hundred and thirteen thousand. Twenty five dollars plus applicable taxes. And be further resolved, the purchase is funded from the Valley Canada grant in support of the City of Thompson's asset management program. Administration?
So this is the long awaited asset portion of the uh, asset management program that the city administration has been working on. This is a part of this council's twenty nineteen to twenty twenty two strategic plan. Uh, which directed administration to develop and implement a citywide asset management program. Since the adoption of that strategic plan, the administration team or the asset management team has been working towards the goal. A number of the registries have been made and excel in different technologies. And a lot of the data has been gathered, getting the registries ready. Draft bylaws have been drafted and one was presented in the past and has been refined since. Um, the city admin team has met with a number of software vendors. To see what programs and technologies are out there that are compatible with what we already have at the city. And at the end of all the trials and demonstrations, our administrative team settled on recommending the central square of the city software. Uh, as being the most um. Compatible with everything that we have at the city as well as to provide the information that council has been making clear that they're interested in having. Um, so as noted, there's a grant that will support this. Which generously given by Valley Canada, uh, which would cover the cost of rolling this out. Then the roll up and this part would be in two phases, so that wouldn't be the end of the program, it would be an ongoing development. It's just this is the roll up of the software, getting all the data into it and debugging it before it's all used.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilor Valentino.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Smook. I'm I'm very happy to be speaking to this. This is a good news story for us, the council and. When our C E O mentions the strategic plan, I think it's interesting for the public to have a look at our strategic plan. Because this council of the day has checked off many boxes that we did first set out in that plan and and it's pretty impressive and this is just one more that we can. We can say that we are going to be able to complete and a huge thank you to Valley Canada for helping with the funding arrangements on this. This is also vital in order for grants moving forward. We need a lot of our asset plans in place. To be able to apply for federal and provincial granting, so this will also help us the municipality and and looking down those routes for grants. Um, I found very interesting in here reading it, the tree inventory. I thought that was very interesting. We'll actually itemize inventory or trees. I do have one quick question for administration. Is phase one in phase two? Are the things that are covered in phase one and phase two, can they be interchangeable at the need of of I guess C A of our C E O? Unlike if something you thought would should in phase two be in phase one or is that able to? Change or is this with this contract with this?
Those are all discussions that we have with Central Square's team, so we've already predetermined the schedule. Uh, but it's an ongoing discussion and if items change, we can change um, on the fly with them. But this was determined based on which registries the administrative team had the most developed. Uh, which would allow them to go in with the least amount of work on the contractor's side. Which gives us time to develop the other side of the registry, which we have less developed at this point.
Did that answer your question, Councilor Valentino?
Thank you. I'll be supporting this. Yeah, yeah, no, that's great. Thank you very much. I'm excited that this is gonna go through and I'll definitely be supporting it. It's a good news story.
You, Counselor McMurdo?
Um, yeah, thanks, Mayor Smook. Uh, just quickly, I wanted to say. That I'm I'm excited for this development. Having, you know, been on for the last fifteen months, the asset management has come up continuously and won't get into, you know. Some of the things that have have made that such a focal point, but I think as Counselor Valentino said, this is a a good news story and a and a step in the right direction as as the city develops. And pursues a more robust and reliable asset management program. Uh, hopefully in time, the all departments will will appreciate some efficiencies from this program and I'd just like to thank thank Ballet for their support and thank our administration for for bringing this to us and. And acting on the strategic plan. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wondering who is in charge of this program? As a new team.
The co-lead, so the the initiator of the project would be myself. The co-leads on deploying the project would be our chief financial officer, because there's a whole finance side. That has to integrate and our new director of development and technical services. Um, the two of them would combine their their staff and their work to develop this one program together. Uh, it'll be rolled out and all directors would be responsible for different aspects of it. And be rolled out to every single department in the city, so it'll trickle down into the uh, the in scope and the out of scope staff.
Thank you, uh.
For Madam Mayor, so when do we expect this program to be on life? That we can see some numbers or some. Whatever the the report will be created for. Any timeframe that we expect it?
There is a timeline, I believe that was given here, but tomorrow after is should this pass, we're meeting with the Central Square team to timeline it up. I believe it was meant to be done over uh, the spring and into the summer, but they would be starting if it's passed tonight. We'd be having a kickoff meeting tomorrow morning to discuss uh, timing it out and what the next stages would be.
So, Madam, Madam, can I just continue? So can I confidently say that before the end of our term, we able to see this project?
As I said, the asset management never ends, so it'll it'll be continually ongoing. So how much will be deployed? I couldn't say tonight, but there will be aspects of this that will be up and running, yes. Will it be completed? No, because the asset management programs never completed as there's always continual improvement.
Yeah.
Your, your.
Yep, that's okay, thank you.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Lumber?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to the asset management as well. We've talked about it since the day we started the action before, I think we some of us discussed it when we were trying to be elected. Been part of these kinds of things for the province and. Was trying to get it done with uh, family business at one time, um, wouldn't been the same as or as. As in depth as this, but one of the things we're running any kind of management system or or having multiple. Inventory, assets, buildings, facilities. Is keep track of it and making sure that things are being done when it's needed. Uh, where lots of uh, water treatment plants, waste water plants, all these things that require operation and maintenance and things kind of substitute that are cracked. Uh, this became a really big thing for us, I'm sure when the when the pool went out, right, and certain things were done. Maybe we still have that, you know, if when heat vac systems going down, other things happen. Cool some environments for need to more critical destruction of things. Lack of mechanical equipment. So I'm really looking forward to seeing how this works out and uh. Even just to start, I'd like to see what's happening in the next couple of months. And yeah, I'm really looking forward to this, thank you, I'll be supporting.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Fountain?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll also be supporting this. I'm I'm glad to see it here finally. Um, I hope that our administration feels the same way. I know uh, what sort of work delays ahead of them, it's probably. Want to be a couple of years before this is all in place and uh, active and live. Uh, should we be so lucky to keep our C E O for that amount of time and and longer, I hope. Uh, I would hope that the C A, the C E O could use that as a means to bring information. To counsel on the performance of the. Uh, city workings as a whole, it eliminates a lot of the subjectivity. And other, um, I guess distractions from uh, getting information you need on how well. Uh, performance is going for the city. So I'm happy to see this. Uh, it is only the beginning without establishing. Uh, dashboards and K P I's, you've got nothing without doing reviews, you have nothing. And so I hope councils in the future support that and track that and make sure that the system. Has eyes on it as it goes through and I hope it provides the value to the C E O and and leadership on the team that uh. Um, I'm hoping it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ellsworth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly, uh, this is something again that's been uh. We've been waiting to see for a long time, it's encouraging to see. An organization like Ballet certainly putting up some money to support it. It's it's something we would struggle with everything we do in budget, we're a lot money. When it comes from an outside source that also understands the need for the City of Thompson, that's a plus for us. I was very involved in asset management uh, through Ballet and the Union and certainly there's nothing but good to see it happen. And when I was going through the document, uh. All nineteen, I believe, or twenty pages of it, I knew that uh, you'd get Councilor Bubba's vote because K P I's were mentioned, so that was wonderful. But in in saying that, I did feel if I was to go around the table, I'm not going to do that. And ask anyone in the room if they knew every billings we had, by which uh, the equipment was in each one, none of us know that information. I would suggest your directors from different departments don't know that information, see an asset management built. So that if we're short something, we can identify, oh, by the way, we need an extra hydrant because we're down to only two in storage or whatever it might be. And every piece of equipment is gonna be a plus. I will make a request, Madam Mayor, again. And that is that, yes, as Counselor Fountain uh, certainly stated, it's gonna take probably a couple of years, but I think as a council. I think at least we one report, if I got one report before the end of this term saying this is where we are, some sort of a re interim report, something. To say where we, you know, what we're working on, I think would be good for not only for the council but for the public. See and there's no doubt about it, there's been a lot of work done leading up to this, but my request would be. If we can get a report once every six months, just to show progress would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further on that? I do think this is a great thing. We actually were working in for it in our last term of council, uh, was very preliminary across Canada even then, so. There was, uh, we actually attended some different programs explaining how it was coming and and how it was gonna work, so. This is is very exciting and just uh, some of our administrations take, Hartley, Joe and he was here. He had actually already drove all the streets and. So inventory, what some of the things that we were need, which would give them the start when we pull. Uh, other managers and that have got things that are already inventory just ready to input, so. I think that our staff and administration are all excited to see this too, because this will. Give us a working document, living document to work through, so. I'm really excited to see it all and that it's, you know, basically only taken about six years to get to this state, so. I and I do agree with the Council, I think the report, you know, by the end of our term, uh, given how, you know, the startup's going and that would will be great, so. Oh, without further ado, I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Please do not have this way by those of us in attendance. Next, we're gonna go into bylaws. Seven point one is the second reading of bylaw two zero one seven dash two zero two two, organizational procedural by law. Resolution two zero two two zero one six, moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lumber. It resolved that by law two zero one seven dash two zero two two, being a bylaw of the City of Thompson to govern. The organization of the City of Thompson and committees thereof and to regulate the proceedings. And founder of the council and the committee thereof be given a second reading. Uh, city administration?
Yeah, sure. Um, the current organization by law and procedures by law were introduced in the, we see third reading in October of twenty twenty. Shortly after that, council had discussions about making changes to that bylaw. Over the summer and into October, our council met with members of the provincial municipal relations department. Where there's talk of different models of governance used across the province. And the uh, council gave administration the job to go out, research different governance models and bring them back for the order of procedure bylaws. Uh, members of the administration along with members of council, attended meetings in the south and members of the administration. Spoke to a number of different municipalities on the laws that are used. Uh, one of the models used was called the committee of the whole, which was used in the City of Thompson, um, probably ten to fifteen years in the past. Um, and this seemed to be heavily used in a number of other communities and our communities around the province. So the administration developed a uh, organization procedure by law draft. Was brought forward to council for review on December eighth. Um, requesting any comments or feedback at that time. It was then brought back again in January for review by council. And the council directed the administration to bring it for for first reading as a special meeting last Thursday. And for second and third reading this evening during the regular council.
Thank you. Uh, hold to Counselor Valentino, Liz Mover?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Smook. Uh, first off, I would just like to give a thank you to our C E O and to his staff of Tommy Proback, who has done a tremendous amount of work on this for council. She has, uh, I don't know how many times we've gotten to send as an email with eyes changed and T's. Or T's crossed and I's dotted, so thank you very much, always. Always open to asking or answering any of our questions as uh, this document was circulated to council. Um, as our city manager indicated, we've been working on this and making changes this council since October twenty twenty as how we saw committees working. Um, and doing some uh, background information uh, to city manager's point, it was two thousand and six to two thousand and eight that the. The council meeting as committee, uh, council of the whole changed to the current structure as committees. And what they were dealing with at that time was very specific issues as in the start of our utility. The T R C C building with the U C N and the joint user group and working with the province on that. And with the new garbage and recycling system we have. I find that interesting because if you read this current. Uh, this current bylaw, it identifies going to specific issues under section eleven with the task force. So I find that there's an alignment there with that. I mean, prior to this, obviously, this council met as committee of the whole, the City of Thompson did. Other municipalities that are currently doing this are Steinbach, Selkirk, Portage, Morden, Doffen and Brandon that I am currently aware of. I am supporting this. I feel that as a council, we work better together. And our committee structure just didn't seem to be um, being as effective. We had a lot of repetitive info and it's very important to identify that. Throughout the province and and actually throughout Canada, there's a lot of uh, talk on the amount of uh, meetings and time and burnout of C E Os. So to have somebody continually go to meetings to see repetitive information, I feel is uh, is a is a waste of of our time for our employee. Currently, we have five committees, our our development review, our finance, our recreation. And safety, our public works and our human resource committee that meets as needed. When I did the averages, right now, these committees meet approximately nine hours a month. So if we were to meet every other Monday, um, I we would be meeting less or approximately the same amount of time starting out. Um, so I I feel time wise, there's it's gonna be a time savings for us. When we talk a lot about the public's involvement, I believe the public will be able to watch the committee of. I believe the public will be able to watch the committee of the whole, which will engage more of our public. We have twenty citizens slash organization reps that sit on our four committees. Now we will be able to reach an audience. I mean, sometimes we see our YouTube, Facebook council meetings being seven hundred. So I feel we'll be effective in reaching out to more. The process for our public will be if they have questions to contact the counselor and that counselor. Brings it to the committee of the whole, and that's clearly outlined the process in this document before us today. I was actually a citizen rep in twenty ten for the for quite a few years on the rec committee, so I'm aware of both sides and how it works. I think that this is going to improve our communication. And it will help us as leaders become more actionable, and I think it's important that we go this way. I think it's also important to note that we are starting to go this way without maybe knowing it. We have thirty organizations that have stepped forward that sit. Outside of our committees on our community safety and well being plan. We also have a community led aquatic facility public committee. So we already are having, if you want to call them mini task force, but we also, we have already our public involved in different. Um, different avenues going on, working with us. Um, I did do some averages and I think that if we worked effectively as a council. We could possibly work thirteen off Mondays between now and October. Compared to a one off of a committee five or six times. So I think that we could be effective. And then have a real good work ahead of us to get us to October. So. Definitely look forward to this and I look forward to moving and that we can get back to working. Thank you, Mayor Smoak.
Thank you. Counselor McMurdo.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Spook. I, I, I guess I'll get my thoughts on this. So now. Part of the third reading, Counsel Valentino did touch on, I guess, the number of the benefits, I think. Um, as she said, they'll be taped and broadcast for the benefit of residents. There'll be some elimination of redundancies for our C A O and. Some members of the administration team. Um, I think that also the that it provides a bit of regularity to the meeting schedule. Um, with instead of, you know, every second Monday at noon or. Free third Thursday at eleven or or some of those things for committees will will meet, you know. Uh, every second Monday when we're not in a regular meeting of council. So I think that might help further in down the road drawing. Drawing candidates from our entity that maybe wouldn't run otherwise. I think in the bylaw, there's there's also a couple of good things like the mechanisms, like request for information or request for direction. That um. That we can use to bring a little more formality and hopefully reduce some of the frustration that that sometimes occurs with getting. Questions answered as well as providing consistent direction to our administration to to work on. So with that said, I, I, I just, I hope that as a council, if we do pass this, that we can move forward. That we can work together in good faith with our administration. To govern and manage the city of Thompson to the for the best of our abilities for the for the remaining nine months of our term. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think every system will work provided we commit. So we've been using the whole system for such a long time. And. It should be work, otherwise we would not be today, right? So my concern is timing. We almost end up the term. We try to change things to suit ourselves. Maybe the next term, the Bay and Council do not like this system. Then it changes again. But I feel sorry for the administration to have to deal with this. Maybe two to three times in one term. It tells something. That means. We have been, we didn't make up our mind or we do our due diligence before. Committed to the system, the so called we want to use. After hearing all the comments, some of the comments from last. First reading and this reading. It's just telling me. We try to make the system suit our lifestyle. Not what we try to put up. Let me put it this way. It's a big commitment to run. A lot of people don't realize to throw their head into the ring. They want to be elected official. They don't realize there's a lot of commitment. The commitment is one of it is the organization. That's how structuring setup will. If you don't, if you think you cannot commit accommodate all this. Sometimes you have to think twice. Could be your personal life. Could be your job. Could be anything. So once you commit. You've got to work things out. But so far, I think we are trying to make the system to suitable our lifestyle. It will never work because eventually there will be a problem because everybody have a different lifestyles. Different commitment. So eventually this problem will be rise again. That's how I look at it. That's why I did support the last time. I seen that too. And it was proven right. I was right. That's why we need to do it again. So I'm not saying the system is a bad system. Overall, I think it's a, is a, is a good improvement. I think it's a timing. I think it's our mentality. I think it's our commitment. As elected official. We try to find a way out of this mess right now. That's why we try to do things. Changing and changing and changing. Will it be worth? I don't know. From my heart, I hope this working from from the rest of my term. And also hope. It will not prove we wrong twice. And cause administration a lot of time to get all this information to change. So with that reason, I also ask for a codeable. And I will not support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Counselor.
Oh, yeah, as I've said in the past, I am in favor of it. I definitely like the structure of it. And it's already been set around the room, so my thoughts, but. I do think it opens up the opportunity to future. People who want to run. Or structured. And it's easier for people with jobs to be able to work around that. I have high hopes for it. I hope it works and I'm in favor.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I hope you have time. Uh, I, I felt like when we started this discussion back in November, that I was one of the chief advocates for this. And I don't want to give anybody the impression that I'm not for the committee of the whole. As a matter of fact, I'm out here for that. I think it's a great idea. I also share the same ideas, fellow counselors, and that hopefully this with predictable schedule. In the evening, this will attract more professionals to the table here, which we we need. Um. The first thing I want to say is that I had raised. Sorry, let me rephrase that. One of the things I was most proud of that we were able to do in this term is have treaty recognition in our bylaw. That's the highest level of law or policy that a city can do. And we lost an opportunity here. In not including it in this document, unless I missed it, I couldn't find it in here. I know that I raised that issue here in Canada. Administration was here at the time. Uh, I was not able to go to the first reading. Which is unfortunate. I would have hoped. That other people in this council chamber, knowing that fifty percent of our population, over fifty percent of our population. Our First Nation people. Would have saw that as the symbol that I had seen it as. And brought it to the table and ensured that I got one there and it did not. And I'm, I, I just. I'm at a loss that we would do that. We can put that in some other policy. You can tell me we can do that. But it will be watered down. No matter what you say. It will be less than what we had. Uh, the loss of, and this is for the public to know. We're losing the ability for the public to come in unscripted or without registration. And discuss or bring up items to the to the council. Now, if you wish to do so, you'll have to register ahead of time. As a presenter. Uh. The applicability of motions. Which in the last. Uh, bylaw was determined by the mayor. Now has no um. Indication who makes that decision. So whether or not a resolution or a motion is applicable coming to this council. It doesn't say who decides that. That's unfortunate. The freedom for the public to come in here and record sessions, which I know has happened in the past. Is no longer there. That's at the discretion of council and the C A O. So they can make people leave for coming in to record the motion or the activities going on in their public arena. I don't. Believe or agree with that. One of the other things I was extremely happy with was that we made it by law. That all recordings of council meetings would be shared publicly. Now that's a discretion. Of council and the C A O. While I'm sure that this council or the C A O will continue to. Supply that video, there's no guarantee of that going forward. That got watered down. I don't agree with that. The chair determines whether or not there's consensus in this committee of the whole. As opposed to voting. You can tell me that the municipal act requires that doesn't allow for voting in committee meetings. I disagree. I believe that was a mistake. The agenda for the council of the whole is at the discretion of the C A O. In the past, we had the ability as counselors for a short period of time. To come in and bring motions that would get brought to the table. As long as you got them within a period of time. Now that's a discretion C O. That's a watering down. I don't agree with that. Eight point seven, there's a diversity poke for you. We use the pronoun he when we have a mayor who is a she. That's unfortunate. Uh, a small thing, no doubt, something we could probably change tonight. But no doubt, uh. Unfortunate. Uh, we have the ability. Uh, up till now. To be able to ask a question or direct comments to anyone in the chamber. Um, and and we also have the ability to direct those comments to members of the administration that were coming here. I know that we've had a problem. Six point three point ten point two now means we can only ask the C A O. The previous speaker or the mover. Questions. I think that's unfortunate. I think that's, I'm going to think, leave the others for another time. I, I do want to come back to the, the opportunity that we missed with the treaty one. With the video recording and the treaty acknowledgement. I would have supported this despite my objections to everything else. Those were very important to me. I can't believe they're not, they weren't important enough to other people in this chamber to raise them. And I, I hope, I hope we can get past that somewhere. And if we can incorporate that, I would support it. But as it is now, I can't support this.
Thank you. I would like to move to Tammy Proback, who had her hand up when you first started asking the questions. Yeah.
I didn't ask Tammy Perick. Any questions, Madam Mayor?
No, I said, when you started asking your or making your comments, I'm sorry that Tammy had her hand up.
Yeah, so the recognition of treaty five will always be included on the agenda. So it'll be there. It's just not noted in the bylaw.
All of them, as I said, we had put that in our bylaw, our highest level of policy. It doesn't matter whether or not it's on the agenda every time. It's a symbol. The fact that we pulled it out of there is a lost opportunity. In my mind. Thank you.
Tammy, do you have any further comments? No, no further comments. Thank you. Uh, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly interesting listening to the comments by my. Fellow counselors. I'm going to try to keep it short as my fellow counselor. Counsel Corbin would say, we know which way the vote is going, so it's almost mute to even speak to it, but I will exercise my right as a counselor to do that. First of all, when we talk about going to one committee, then we talk about task force. Absolutely. You'll always have task force column like you like. I think self committed, you name it, they're all important. Depends on the subject of the debate. But when I think of the. I talked about this long later than the weekend. Since we got on council, three years of all in two months or three months, whatever it is now. Where's our, where's our crime to in this city today compared to when we started? I would suggest that we took a poll was a lot higher than it was when we started in many ways. And to think that we're losing that opportunity to add public engagement in regards of. Members sitting on committees to really discuss that at a public safety committee meeting. There's no way that. In, in a three hour meeting from finance to every other thing that comes up, we're going to be able to do due diligence on that. Thirty eight police officers we have in council are rising costs our C and P. We haven't even sat down really to talk about that. And when's the last time we met with them to give them any sort of direction? We haven't, even though I've requested, others have requested numerous times. That was at public safety meetings. Now you, now you're going to to a committee as a whole. Even with our aquatic facilities, big conversation and why do we have a task force? If you want to call it that, our committee in place looking at that. They don't make decisions of council, so it's still very important that we meet. Again, with how many municipal companies do we have in Manacola? Hundred and thirty seven. So we spoke to three or four people, three or four municipals about committee of whole. Yeah, yeah, from a previous counselor. Basically, I almost said it wrong. I stand corrected. We've been doing committee meetings since two thousand eight. That's fourteen years and it's worked for the most part very well. All of a sudden, we have a few issues. Between the mayor and council administration and we want to go to committee as a whole. And that's really the con. If you really want to look at the proxy and honor, the only reason we're in this room tonight, looking at a committee as all. It's because the breakdown between administration and mayor council. That's it. We met, I attended every meeting. There was a lot of good work done by administration and council and the public at those meetings. I believe that this mayor and council. Is nowhere near engaged with the public as they should be. Have we done some good stuff? Yeah, but the, the, the day to day things out in this city that's going on, we're not engaged and now. Because we'll have no involvement. On any of the committees from, from, from citizens reps. I don't care what anyone says with citizen reps. If we got one more, that's one extra. Person that's helping city council. But I think I heard we had twenty. Let's talk to some of them when it comes to participation. They heard the first reading. Some of them are devastated. And Mayor Smoak, let me challenge you tonight because you made this statement. You were concerned. That there would not be. Citizen records on. You made this statement. Yet you, you voted for the first meeting without addressing that. Without addressing that. So what you said from your chair as mayor, what you really said to the people of Thompson is. You're not important. You won't be here. We'll make the decision. That's what I learned from. That's my own perspective when I get. Someone made the reference to the last thirteen meetings from now till the end of our term. Well, let me be very clear tonight. When I put my name forward to run for city of council, I never said I'll give you this much time or that much time. I got a lot of respect for working people. I really do. But my time is no less important than yours. And I sit on a lot of committees in this city and try to do a good job. Out of the forty something years I've been there, I've been involved in this community, one way or the other. And not unlike you, Mayor, you're very similar to that. So for you to sit in your seat as mayor. And the support. A bylaw change, whatever else happened on that real concrete answer. To public engagement, I'm disappointed. Because we've done a lot of good work, you and I together, let alone anyone else. And I want to support you. I want to support the administration. I want to support this council. But the very people that elected me. Gave me advice. And also a lot gave me advice in this chamber. But in addition to that, to sit on committees, whether I was appointed by yourself on a committee or not. I showed up. I needed to understand what was happening in our city and I love this city. So here we are at second meeting. And I believe what Counsel Wong said, it's not, it's not being against the committee of all. I don't think for the most part what we were doing. Was not working, even though Counsel Valentino talks about repetitions. He's not completely wrong in that either. There's a lot of good things that's been raised. So if you were to ask me in summing this up. Even though I disagree with it because I think administration, the council's got to work together. We're both paid by the public, no matter how many stripes they have. I don't think this was the idea to do it, but my most important thing out of all of this for me. I think I've been working most thing is. The question is not truly answered. How are we going to engage people? Not just city. Look. I think you tonight, we might have four hundred viewers listening to to us here. Four hundred viewers listening to you is not input. It's not. I'm glad you're listening. It's the feedback you get. And I get a lot of it. And I'll give you one example and I'll end it. This weekend, and I got it on this phone. Picture after picture. Picture after picture after picture after picture, the decorable state downtown on our sidewalks. We must think that everyone. And this is where we're not getting the input. We had a public safety meeting or public works meeting. We've been able to talk about this more. And I understand people are sick and so have I been sick and others. But if you look at Thompson as old, when I went around town, just have a look myself, not only just the picture, a little look. You must think that every family heir as a vehicle. So endangered people make no walk on our streets with no vice whatsoever. So if you don't think that the the complaints are coming in, they're not coming in like they should to the administration, the council, because people are tired. They're sick and tired of doing it with no response. Now, there might be a good explanation why our sidewalks are in the position that they're in. But this is already tomorrow will be February first. And some sidewalks has up to one street of those today of either hate feet, if not more snow piled on that sidewalk. So thank you for listening. I will not support this because if the public is not involved. And if the administration lead the charge at last, why don't we just save the money of the of the city taxpayers and get rid of council, mayor, the administration from the city? Thank you.
Anyone else? What's the problem? Uh, will be your second?
Second and last, I guess.
Thank you.
Uh, I I please, if there is anyone in this room, uh, and this is uh me attempting to save this because I do wanna support this. I don't, I agree with a lot of what Counselor Ellsworth had to say and and also with the opposing view as well. Uh, but I don't believe the impetus for this was the issues between council and administration. I think there's lots of opportunity for us to meet as a whole and decide as a whole as opposed to what was happening before in small groups. This is good. I, in my opinion. I wanna support this. What I don't get is when I brought this forward, I don't believe there's anyone in this room. Who's opposed to having treaties that uh treaty uh recognition in the meeting. If you are, raise your voice. I don't think there's anyone who opposed that. This was in our previous bylaw. It's not in this one and I have to ask why. I don't think there's anyone in this room, having spoken to everyone, worked and everyone here, who's against to having video um. Uh, posted of every council meeting instead of it being at the discretion of council. I don't think there's anyone here who is. So why is it not in here? When we had it on the last bylaw. The reason I think it's in not in here is because we pulled all of this bylaw from Selkirk. And the administration can tell me if I'm wrong and didn't pull what was great about our bylaw into this one. So I'm asking those of you who are gonna vote today, because I know you can't make these changes now at this point. Not to support this, to put something uh, a little bit better on paper. And you know what? I'm gonna. Do I myself a disservice here and say shame on you guys for not bringing this stuff up? When you had the opportunity in the first reading and shame on me for not being here. I had a medical issue. I couldn't be here. Otherwise, I would have been uh yelling the loudest about it. But I'm asking you. On behalf of the First Nations people of this community and on the behalf of everybody who likes transparency and that includes us. To do better than what we're doing today. And let's give this another shot because I don't think we can today. Uh, unless I'm told that we can do this through friendly amendment. I would like to support this, but I just, it's it's just unbelievable if those things weren't included.
I'd like to go to uh Anthony Administration. Do you know if there could be a friendly amendment put to this? I know you give the first greeting and then.
No.
We can.
I don't think at this point, the way that it's presented, no, this was circulated, like I said, back in November or December. As well as until January, you know, comments were received at that time.
Not one. I know I.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. That is, oh, I brought that issue up and there's other council of here who heard that. It wasn't brought up in the way the administration wanted, but I raised it.
Counselor Crum, thanks for your hand up.
Um, yeah, I just wanna say, I I was pretty sure we talked about it um. In the past about a few of these issues, but. Uh, I honestly never thought and caught it on the first reading, so that's my vote there.
Yeah, I read it too and I didn't. I I guess I missed it because it's already on our agenda and that we do practice. That I I do apologize. I did not touch it.
So if I can follow up. I pointed out that those weren't in here. Administration said that they weren't in here. So either you didn't care enough to go and look and fight on behalf of those things. Or or uh, you're incompetent. Those are the two choices. And I don't mean to be personal or I don't mean to be sad. Those, in my opinion. Transparency and recognition of our First Nations makeup are important. So when you say that you didn't go look for it, even after I had pointed out that those were omissions, that's not good enough.
Well, I guess uh, I didn't look for it, maybe if you want, but I will be in contact, but also sir. For you not following protocol and putting it in writing so that administration look for um, I do think is lacking also over there. I don't wanna get into a fight over um. I just, as we found that we can't change this uh. Counselor Crum, have you finished your statement?
Oh, well, I guess my question is then. What, what is the proper procedure then? If that was something to do, we'd have to. Start all over.
Anthony.
Yep, so Counselor finished the readings of this tonight. It would stand as it is and then council could introduce an amending by law to make the changes. Uh, otherwise you would have to kill this at this time or table it. Actually, no, you wouldn't be able to table it. You'd have to start over. You'd have to redo this one. But I've just said that we have done plenty of amending bylaws many times. So it's 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 possible to do very quickly whatever many bylaw that council wants. It still requires the three readings.
Yeah, I think you're cautious when you start following. Have council the whole, that's what you're saying. And then do the amendment after.
Yes, we've we've done similar things in the past. So a bylaw can be passed and a bylaw can be quickly amended. But to restart rewriting how it is now could affect the way the paragraphs relate out in the way the references are inside within the document. That's where the issues come.
Thank you. And I guess that's where Counselor Fountain's issue comes is that we're doing it as an afterthought. I do understand that. Uh, Councilman McMyrdle?
Uh. Yeah, thanks, uh, Mary. And thanks, Anthony, for for kinda clearing that. I I I agree with Counselor Fountain that I I don't. And I don't think anybody maybe in this chamber wants to take that step back after after acknowledging that these meetings are taking. In place on. Treaty land. It, I I don't think that's. That it's, it's an intentional disrespect from this council. And I would hope that. That after we pass this and we resume meetings, because as as we've noted several times, we haven't met in committees since Oct. October, that we start to tackle the backlog, we we meet as a whole and that these two specific amendments um are addressed. You know, in in the forthcoming months and and I would certainly be in support of.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Valentino?
Uh, thank you, Mary. Look, uh, just a couple of comments on this. I did not not miss it. It, as Tammy Proback has identified and clarified. We can set that agenda and have that identified when we make the agenda for as committee of the whole, where we would make that statement. Just like we do now. So I know personally, I did not miss that reading it. Um, it is my understanding that we will continue to do that and that we will do that of the procedural part of this bylaw. Um, so I have had no bearing on missing that on purpose. It is my intent that we will continue it as was explained to us as we have gone through this process. That it will be identified on the agenda as a committee of the whole when we meet and that's how our agendas will be set out. The other comment I'd like to make is that all questions during council go directed through the chair. There are no questions that are sent or given direct to administration. They always go through the chair first. So that is nothing that is out of the ordinary. I will support this as is, as we have to move on. We can look at amendments, but we have to meet as a committee of the whole to get to if we're gonna have amendments. But as of right now, that statement for treaty five land was never missed. It has our opportunity to set it in our agendas every council meeting. I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To me, it's not written black and white. It do not exist. That's how I look at it when come to law. And uh, I I just wanna go back to a little bit of the comments from the city manager about the uh, we done that before. Can you help me to remember which bylaw that we did that pass it and then amended later? Which one? Then I like to go back and juice a little bit of research myself.
You'd be able to find it by searching all that and looking at amending bylaws. I don't have the numbers of them, but I'm very aware that we've done it in the past. So they're all available and all that. We could look it up after this meeting. I can write it to you.
But to me, for my three terms, so Kelly, you finish, sorry. Are you done? Finished?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thankful. To me, in my two terms. I'm not that old. My memory is pretty good. It never happened before. So that's why I like to point it directly to me. So I can go back and check my note. It never happened before. So. Just to prove the point, appreciate counsel uh, Fountain pointed out a lot of important part of this bylaw. I myself. I'm not as good as you when it comes to reading, but I just understand the fundamental. As I said earlier, my first round. One of the reasons I cannot support is because of timing. Another reason is because the system in place for reason. And we cannot accommodate to the system and we expect the system accommodated us. It would never work. It probably temporarily you can make it work, but eventually we'll find trouble. That's all I think I'm talking about. And it proven to me, the first round was wrong and I hope the second round not wrong again. So I will strongly suggest that we should kill this and make it right and make it good. I don't wanna do the things like Band-Aid and later on and do all this changes and cause administration. Right now, we're short staff. As a a a city manager explain, uh, give us a report saying we are shorting staff. And now we wanna add more work to them? Nope, I don't like that. I wanna give them as much as time to do their job, their own thing, rather than doing all this for us again. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, at this point, I'd like to raise a point of privilege, if I may. Well, I may, because the bylaw allows me to. Uh, I was uh, heard from Counselor Valentino, which characterized my uh um. Uh, interpretation of six point three point ten point two as uh, what? Uh, only are allowing us to ask questions uh to anyone. What she had said was they all had to be directed to the chair and that's true through here in six point three point ten point one. But what I was pointing through was subsection two, which you asked questions directed to other people through the chair. And now you can only do that to three people, three individuals. So my comments stand. I'll point out that uh, the comment and the assumption or the insinuation that I was erroneous is not correct. And I point to Counselor Valentino and have asked her to read that section and see where I'm wrong there because the. Is the uh interpretation of it going to the chair was not what I was talking about. Thank you.
Counselor Valentino, have you uh access to the uh pointed question, Counselor Fountain has? Uh, six.
Uh. No, I was just, I was just clarifying from my end that all questions usually go through the chair.
And I think he was saying that now it reads that they only can be answered to three people where before. If other administrations in the room, we could go through me and talk to them. Am I correct, Counselor Fountain?
Madam Mayor, you have this in front of you. You can read six point three point ten point two all day. It's right there in front of you. What I said was correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony?
Three point ten point two says questions may be asked only of A, the previous speaker, B, the mover of the motion, or C, the city manager or designate.
Thank you, so. So I guess I'm running.
If you're finished at that point, yeah.
I I I take your point um.
Is it correct, Madam Mayor? Am I correct, Madam?
Anthony?
The city manager or designate, the designate allows any member of administration to then answer the question through the city manager. So that's the way it's written, so that it's not just the city manager, it's any that designates as I'm your direct employee. The question comes to me and almost like we've almost done in the past, I would just point to whoever it is in the administration, they would provide the answer.
Am I correct, Madam Mayor?
Uh, I don't believe so because I I believe you can still ask the question if.
Okay.
The way Anthony has described it.
Thank you.
To to the designate. Thank you.
Uh, the question is put forth to the administration and as I've considered it. Um, the last time we did an amending bylaw that I can remember because we're still ongoing with legal is the Arctic Drive closing. Um, where there was a land swap with the school district mystery link uh for the multi-use paths. During that bylaw, there's three readings that were provided and it was identified by the um land titles. Or is either land titles or the legal surveyor that the wrong deposit number was used on the bylaw, though the rest of the bylaw was correct. Therefore, amending bylaw was given three readings to change the number of the deposit number that was done here with this council. That's the last one that I can remember, but I'm sure I could pull up others through all of it.
Just so everybody knows, my screen is no longer. Somebody scrolled. Oh, that's me. Sorry. There, it's back. Uh, any further? Uh, Counselor Elfer?
I'll I'll be quick, Madam Mayor. I believe if you've truly listened to the. Conversations around this table, the debate uh from each counselor, a lot of good points uh on on all of the counselors towards this. But I think there's enough identified. Not that I'm looking at slowing down the process that. I believe we should defeat this bylaw and a lot of the administration, I believe, have captured. What has been said, the points has been raised in the air to the document. And certainly uh, in respect for administration, it was sent out. We had an opportunity, I get that. But like a lot of things, if you don't dig as deep as you 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 should, or. If you haven't really read through the document, you could miss things. And I believe to Counselor Fountain's credit, he took the time to do that, even though he may have had an opportunity and he says he did. Uh, to address it before, we can't ignore. That there's a number of things that should be reviewed. If you wanna go to committee of the whole. So I would suggest, and and that's all I can do as a counselor, that we kill the 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 uh, the second bylaw reading. Allow the administration to come back with the document. With the uh information that has been provided, some very, very important information to Counselor Wong's pipe. In in negotiating many contracts over my my career. I've said it then, I'll say it now. If it's not in writing, it doesn't exist. It is not black and white. And I believe it's important. That we knowledge or average right from the start of a bylaw. What happens next, counsel? Decides not gonna go on the agenda, not part of the agenda. It's gone. Whereas within the bylaw, it says you want to do it, you want to do it. It it it's you shall, you will, not may or I don't, or I think so. The show and well is critical to any document. So in closing, I'd say that to the benefit of this document that have that have a lot of debate. And good debate, whether I agree or not, good L P D B. Some of the counselors thinks they've read it all and sure missed nothing. Well, apparently we did miss something. So I would suggest, Mayor Smoot, you take the lead and say. We should, we should, and according to the city manager, we can't table it. I think you should take the lead responsibly and say. We should not pass this on the second reading, but we should take this stuff and bring it back. Get an update in the document, bring it back for first reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Madam?
Yeah, to clarify, uh, the council could table this. Uh, what I was saying is the recommendation would be to pass the bylaw and to amend it as we meet.
Mark, excuse me? We could table it, but.
Yes, what I'm saying is you could table it, but what I'm saying, the recommendation would be is to pass through with it or defeat it, one of the two. But to continue on, not to table it at this time, because at this time you still can't make those edits. So either you pass it and make your amendments. So it's either you pass it and make your amendments, or you give us the direction to stop now and start all.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a quick question of administration? We need this bylaw to actually meet as a council, the whole. My understanding was we do not.
Um, the way that we had our discussions is you'd still be having your regular meetings at council. But really, the proper way to do it to have the committees of the whole, I checked in this block, would be to pass an actual bylaw to enable that.
Does that mean we can't meet as a committee of the whole ahead of having this in place?
Wouldn't be the proper way to do things, no.
I'm asking if we can or not.
And that's the best answer I can give you, would, could, I'd have to ask if MSO, but I believe no.
Okay, so after listening to everybody, we definitely have, everybody has spoken their two terms, except Deputy Mary Lumber, but it will be one to speak.
The most has appeased me that we missed a couple of things here, and I have heard it three times, like, kind of, I missed some. All the things I've learned about contracts and and dealing with the. This type of thing is you have to have something in place. I don't want to use the terms that my teacher mentor told me, but. Poor class, very well. Having this, passing this and knowing that we will make amendments to. We've discussed the administration has a written down, we're going to amend. Moving this forward will allow us to move forward with these. Can you go and move forward with operations and things that we have to get done? It pains me not have those things on there right now. But I think we have to move forward, and I'll be supporting this moving forward and requesting that we immediately. As soon as these things are passed, we start making those amendments and put them in place as soon as we possibly.
Okay, so I've listened, I have listened to all of you. I really do believe we have to get back to meetings, and we have to carry on and move on. I do, I for one, over a year, will start investigating the committee of the whole and felt it was the way to go for our council. And ask questions of other communities and ask questions of our administration, to which they answered to my satisfaction. I found that in November and early December, when we had a couple of meetings, we would sometimes get into the room. We weren't all on the same page. We talked, we got things together, and we were able to move on, at least take decisions. So I do believe by going to this committee of the whole, meeting together, uh, that we welcome. Uh, to Counselor Fountain's thing, I do apologize. I think, I guess, I just assumed we are progressive enough that we are automatically including our indigenous partners, everything that we do when we do business. When we do our our council agendas now, uh, we reach out to people, uh, they reach out to us if they have concerns. And I really do, if we want to make the adjustments later, uh, fine, uh, I'm all for it. I had intended to talk to more of our committee members. As it was, I only managed to a few of them reached out to me. I didn't get very thoughtful about. Over this last couple of weeks due to some personal circumstances. Two of our longest. Serving members of committee actually reached out to me. One of them was stating that he finds on the committee that a lot of the things not interesting. This way, if we're going to the task force system, he just wants his name, actually take names to different areas. Or that his expertise that he would like to be included. I also had somebody that has not been chosen for committees reach out to me. And say that now they feel that can, they asked about that, that they're now that they're going to be televised, the committee of the whole. They can watch it, and then they can reach out to us, because they have reached out to me, and I know they've reached out to at least one or two other counselors in the past. The public in general that we talk to, they think that this committee of the whole, uh, work should, we work together. Uh, will be a much better route for us to go, and I'm in agreement with them. And I think with that, we are going to call for the vote on this resolution.
I'm asking for a recorded vote.
So for resolution two zero two two zero one six, in a reported vote, all those in favor? Air Smoke, Counselor Prue, Counselor Valentino, Counselor McFirdle, opposed. Counselor Wong, Counselor Cotton, Counselor Ellsworth, carried. And as it was carried, we will be going to the third reading of this resolution. Resolution two zero two two zero one seven, moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Deputy Mary Lumber. It resolves that bylaw two zero one seven, two zero two two be given third and final reading. And that it do now pass, and this will be in a reported vote automatically as it's through reading. Administration?
Uh, thank you, Mary Smoak. All of my comments for force are stand the same. I look forward to moving forward. And if, uh, as a committee of the whole, if this council wants to make amendments, look forward to those discussions, but I look forward in passing this and moving forward. It's a couple of points that just however we adopt a bylaw, the next council can change it. At any time and as many times as they want. So just because we do something as this council doesn't mean that's the way it is set in stone forever. The next council always has the ability to change that. Um, and I thank you for the clarification that we have done amended bylaws in the past. So thank you for those clarifications also, and I look forward to moving forward. Thank you, Mary Smoak.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. And the next subsequent session of. Counsel or term of council, as it's called, can make changes. That's great. I was proud to do this, and and I know many other people supported being that. You should be proud that we did that as well. And I I don't want that taken away from me or the people that it was assembled for. Um, it's unfortunate that many people in this room agree that we missed that. I'm. Uh, apologize to the public for not being here to raise those issues. You can ask those people why they didn't raise these issues themselves. Uh, certainly transparency and acknowledgement for our first nations are important to me, and I know they're important to you guys. Uh, I I just wish it was reflected here. Now, having said that, I hope to have your. Uh, support in making these amendments as soon as possible, because I think these are important oversights. Uh, I will be, uh. My best to push that forward and hope that everyone does their judicial diligence to, uh, uh, read and support what they're. Putting forward. Thank you, Madam.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a comment?
Thank you, Mary. Just listen to your comment earlier, the second reading. You say you did research and talking to a lot of people about changing this organization to make the committee of the whole. For a year. Just past couple of months ago, November third. It just made me wonder. Why are you bothered to appointing the director or the chair of the individual committee? Since you already done the research since a year ago. So to me, that's kind of like issue washing that your decision, you could have just said no. I'm not going to appoint any chair at that time, because I already planned to do this committee at home, but you did. You pointed. So basically, in my opinion, you wasted my time that night to come here to listen to all this appointing. I was so optimistic that I'd be a coacher of the public work, so I think I can do something to change it. And after that, I mean, shut down. And now you say, wow, we need to do this. It very problematic to me when it comes to leadership. I think the whole problem of this is because of a lack of leadership. Nobody to blame.
This is the topic here. We're talking about bylaw, not how this all of a sudden changed.
I will answer Counselor Wong's, because the procedure and bylaw, uh, organizational bylaw stated that is what we had to do. I actually asked you at one point, about a year or so, a little more, if you were in favor of committee of the whole, and you weren't. I asked a couple other counselors, and they weren't. So I had to do my homework in order to change procedural bylaw and speak to people. I couldn't just go out and say, I want committee of the whole, it's going to happen. That's not how it works here. So as democracy, we did it the way we had to. I. It may never come up if there wouldn't have been other counselors that were willing to work and check it out. So, thank you, sir.
That's fine, Madam Mayor. What was the point of order?
I agreed with him as the point of order, that this wasn't, but I also said I agree with the point of order, but that I would like to answer your question.
Okay, appreciate that. I'm done anyway.
Oh, yeah, thanks, Mary Smoak. Um, I've I've already made a number of comments. I just want to to say finally that, um. With, if this does pass, I I do very much look forward to the resumption of committee meetings. I think it's going to be a benefit with everyone present. Um, and yeah, we 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 need to get back to those meetings to ensure the the important business of the city. Uh, receives the appropriate oversight from its elected officials and. And 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 then in those meetings, we can address, um, at least a couple of the good points that, um, Counsel Fountain brought up with respect to recognizing Treaty Five territory. And ensuring that all meetings are broadcast. I think that was another good point you had made. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ellsworth?
Madam Mayor, thank you again. I'll try to be as brief as I can. Sometimes that's difficult for me. At the end of the night, if this council decides to to pass the third reading, which I believe they will, democracy do rule. I can guarantee you to you, to my fellow counselors, to the administration, and more so, more important, the public, I will be here. I will debate. I will continue fighting for the people that elect me. And I just want to make one point. You talk to all the people you talk to. I'll be very clear, because a lot of people vote for me in this office, so I talk to a lot of people too. And somehow we must live in different communities, but I don't get the same thing, but I would be interested. To sit down and have a coffee and discuss that, because we should be on the same page and we're sharing the same concern, right? I get different views, not saying that the people you talk to didn't share those views. I'm not, I'm not questioning that, not at all. But somehow we get to, and it could be the way it's asked, it could be the way that, you know, we both come off talking to people. But, you know, I I usually vote four or five times a week. I meet with a lot of people. In fact, I meet sometimes with with a lot of senior people. They're laughing, and so when when I hear you say that you talk to so many people and they're laughing at this. I shake my head because I'm not getting the same, and I wish we were on the same page. And it makes all of us council to make a good city, all of us. You're just happen to be the leader that ran for mayor, but it takes all of us to do that. And the quicker we get on the same page, if we can, if we can, the better off we are for this city. There's a lot of work to be done in this city, and we're running out of time. And I will say that, uh, in closing, even though I will vote against the resolution, I've always stated the reasons that I heard about. I should say, I've always stated the reason, I'm not going to iterate those again. But again, if it's if it's passed tonight. Um, you can count on me as a counselor showing up at meetings. I hope I can take the rest of that for the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, one quick thing here, can a friendly amendment be made on our third, uh, reading?
Yeah, I guess it depends what they.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, you probably agree with me that mayors can be female. I would hope that you would agree with me on that one. And in the spirit of doing something constructive tonight, other than just raising my voice and being angry. I'd like to make a friendly amendment of section eight point seven, edging it from he to the chair. Uh, which would be.
I would recommend that it be they to be consistent with the rest of the bylaw.
Or they, let's be inclusive of the the fact that we have a female mayor here.
I've made that change already.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You do need to vote on that motion to amend, Madam Mayor, I believe.
It's just a friendly amendment. It's noted.
So we don't have to vote on it?
No, it's just a friendly amendment.
Thank you. Just before we vote on this, uh, or. Third reading, I would like to say, um, thank you for all the hard work, and this work is just beginning. This is a new stage. New, uh, challenges for us, and I'm really looking forward to it. And basically, I do think all of us, mayor and council, we should be out in the publics more. Maybe Counselor Ellsworth and I should even have a a coffee shop chat with, together with people, so that we can get them. On the same page there, so, uh, looking forward to that. With that, I'm going to call for the vote and a reported vote, as it's automatic in our third reading. Uh, all those in favor? Deputy Mary Lumber, Counselor Prue, Counselor McFirdle, I'm sorry, yeah, Counselor Valentino and Mary Smoak. Uh, opposed, Counselor Ellsworth, Counselor Fountain, Counselor Wong, it is carried. Thank you. As there is no merit report tonight, I will just like to say that we will likely be bringing things forward. I I in through the grapevine that, uh, February is Black History Month, so it's very important that we acknowledge that. And there's, it's Hard Health Month also, so we will, uh, please be cognizant of that. Uh, we're supposed to get more snow tonight, so let's be careful when we're traveling, and have a good evening, everybody. Can I call for adjournment? Counselor Prue, Deputy Mary Lumber, all favor. Thank you.